I call to order the 19th meeting of the Maryland City Council, meeting in regular session on Wednesday, October 15th, 2014. Note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. The President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak on each agenda item. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Mo.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Mr. Robiger, please call the roll.
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
He just stepped out for a second.
Mayor Mo.
We are going to jump to Agenda Item 11, sort of advance our agenda a bit. The Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1808, Text Amendment Number 235, In Ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article One, Zoning, Division Nine, Exceptions and Supplements to the zoning regulations of the Laurel City Code Providing an Effective Date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:04. I have...
President, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Brock, please to present the file.
Mr. Brock.
Yes, Mr. President. Text Amendment Application Number 235 was filed on August 15th, 2014, by Patuxent Greens Golf LLC and Paradise Energy Solutions LLC. On September 11th, 2014, the proposed ordinance and cover letter requesting comments was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning. As of this date, a response has not been received. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application, and public hearing was advertised as required by law in the September 25th, 2014 edition of the Prince George's Sentinel. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission of the Mayor and City Council dated October 15th, 2014 reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on October 14th, 2014, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. On motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Wilford, and carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the Planning Commission recommends that the Mayor and City Council deny text amendment application number 235. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. I will now open the public hearing at 7:04. I have one person signed up to speak on this agenda item. I'll just say the last name's Johnson. If you'll come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Zinaia Johnson. Good evening. I am the attorney for the Village, the Village of Greens of Patuxent Condominium Association. My client definitely supports the Commission's recommendation that the text amendment not be passed. There was a full hearing yesterday, as noted, where residents of the condominium association stated their concerns about the proposed text amendment, namely, the primary reasons why the association, the condominium association, is not in favor of this text amendment would be first, that the current version of the amendment states that there's a limit of 1,200 square feet per lot for these ground solar panels, but the proposed amendment would basically eliminate that limit and have it limitless. And we understand that the golf course, the Patuxent Greens Golf Course, would be suggesting or proposing to install between 12,000 and 50,000 square footage of these solar panels. So that's one major point of contention for the condominium association. Additionally, there's issues with the setback requirement. I believe the proposed, the proposed text requires a 35-foot setback requirement. It's the condo association's position that that is not enough, considering the scale, the large size of what's proposed in terms of the solar panels. So they request something much more substantial than a 35-foot setback. Additionally, the condominium association would suggest that some type of environmental impact study be done on a project of this size. Again, you're going from the current requirements in the text ordinance is 1,200 square feet per lot. They're proposing 12,000 to 50,000 square foot per lot. So we are of the opinion that some type of environmental impact study would be needed to, in order to determine, you know, what impact that such a large-scale solar panel implementation would cause on the surrounding areas. Those are probably the major points of contention for this bill, why we support the tax amendment, why the condominium association supports the Commission's recommendation in terms of recommending against the tax amendment. Additionally, the condominium association is concerned about their views, property values, and just changing the nature of what they bought into when they bought into the Village, the Village at Greens at Patuxent. They, you know, they bought into a view of the Greens, and this proposed amendment would substantially affect and change the nature of the neighborhood where they bought, they bought these condominiums.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I have no one else signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
If you'll come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Linda Griffin. I'm at Player Drive at the Village of Greens at Patuxent. And I just wanted to know if there's a contact person for planning, so I can send a little follow-up of what we discussed.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have.
I don't have a pen.
We'll make sure that we get you that contact information tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sir, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Jacobs, and I live at 9411 Trevino Terrace. And also in this text amendment, we didn't bring it up, but they are very vague on the blocking of the antennas, or how they're going to be, it's changing from being blocked to being screened in the amendment. And there's nothing that really says how it's to be screened, with what natural barriers are supposed to be put up. The text amendment is not quite finished. It needs to have more work done to it, basically, so that it doesn't affect everybody in Laurel. If someone wants to put these arrays up as big as they want, it seems like they'll be able to do it just about anywhere if this text amendment is passed. You know, the golf course is a huge place. There's other places they could put this, this array on their property, but they seem to be set on this one area that definitely affects the condominium association and benefits the golf course immensely. And the condominium association gets nothing out of it. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:09. And counsel, I will entertain a motion to postpone.
Mr. President, possibly you need to...
I close the public hearing. Yes, come on. I'll reopen the public hearing at 7:09. Just please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Odessa Phillips, 9407 Nicholas Lane in Laurel, Maryland. I really wanted to speak specifically to say thank you, because I appreciate the use of this process. After we were surprised to find out about the array being put in or being proposed, I think we were really pleased with the fact that not only did this council give us an opportunity to provide comments, but also that we were given an opportunity to provide extended comments last night at the planning board meeting. And it appeared from the consideration that was given from all of the members of the Planning Commission that real, that they really listened to what we had to say and understood. I would urge you, moving forward, that when you have amendments or opportunities, that you get a process in place that also considers making sure that the public is adequately notified. I think that was our only real concern. We didn't feel like we had been properly given time to react appropriately. So if a process like that could be built in as a requirement, as opposed to as a courtesy from a proposer, then I think that most people in the city of Laurel would be pleased. So...
We usually blame the Laurel leader for that. We look back.
And that was really my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:11. And counsel, I will entertain a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Mr. President?
Councilman Lez?
I move to postpone Ordinance Number 1808, Text Amendment 235 indefinitely.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rao, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. President Smalls?
I vote yes. Thank you. We will now move back to the top of our agenda, to Agenda Item 5, Approval of Minutes of the Seventh Meeting of August 11th and the Eighteenth Meeting of September 22nd, 2014. Counsel, if there are no changes, I know we've had some edits to this. If there are no further changes or additions to the minutes, I would accept a motion.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
Move to approve the minutes of the Seventeenth and Eighteenth Meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rao, please call the vote.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Agenda Item 6 is the report of the Mayor and City Council, and tonight we'll start with Councilman Lez.
Thank you, Mr. President. October 4th, I attended the cops on the roof at the Laurel Dunkin' Donuts. Congratulations to the men and women of the Laurel Police Department on another successful fundraiser for Special Olympics, and special thanks to our Laurel Dunkin' Donuts business for participating. October 6th, along with my colleagues, attended a meeting with citizens of Patuxent Greens on the issue of the proposed solar panel array at Patuxent Golf Course and the text amendment we have just voted on. October 11th, Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Annual Awards banquet was held, and I was lucky enough to be there again this year. Congratulations to all the award recipients. Laurel citizens are truly very lucky to have a dedicated group of men and women volunteers willing to respond in times of need to save property and lives. October 13th, I attended a meeting at St. Mark's Methodist Church to listen to concerns of safety, security, and respect for our Laurel citizens. Today, I had the pleasure of attending the opening of Mo's Restaurant at Laurel Town Center. St. Vincent Pilate High School was a beneficiary of the revenues today. Laurel High School will be tomorrow, and I was glad to see that the mayor cooked his own meal. October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Based on recent events in the news, domestic violence can affect anyone, female or male, and has the potential to follow victims to the workplace and threaten the safety and productivity of victims. We must be mindful how to assist colleagues who need help in this arena. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Councilman Ricks?
I'd like to echo what Mr. Lez, Councilman Lez, said, and I did the same things that he did. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Councilwoman Nicholas?
Thank you. In addition to what's already been said, I attended the Art Festival that was at the Laurel Omri on Sunday, which was well-attended. There were some beautiful works of art there. And I'd also like to commend Chief McLaughlin for such a warm welcome that he gave to Councilman Warren Branch from the Baltimore City Council. Thank you for your hospitable, being hospitable, and the wealth of information that you provided to them. It was regarding the body cameras. Thank you.
Councilwoman McQuary?
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the aforementioned events, I also attended on September 25th the National Preparedness Event, put on by many departments in the city at the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, and most importantly, our own Mr. Fleming. It was a wonderful event, and there's so much information out there that, you know, I would like to see it better attended by more citizens in the city, because they really need this information, and not at the time of the emergency, but before, because we all need to be prepared for something like this. In addition to the, the River Fest was absolutely gorgeous this year, and I think the car show really added to so many people coming out, in addition to the weather. The cops on rooftops, I hope they made lots of money. That was very enjoyable. And the Art Festival on Sunday, as my council member colleague stated, lots of good stuff to look at, and I hope it grows and grows each year. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mayor Mo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things. The, as you're well aware, we had the ribbon cutting in here. We are continuing to make minor changes and adjustments. Microphones and other things that you may see, or those at home watching, please provide the feedback so we can make the adjustments accordingly. The, I want to thank Mr. Fleming for the City of Laurel National Preparedness Month at the fire department, as well as the members of the fire department and police department. We did have our prescription drug take-back program at the Laurel Police Department. And I do want to remind everyone, the chief has set up a drop box that's there in the lobby, which is 24/7. You can drop off any prescription drugs without any questions asked. It's right inside on the first floor, Chief. First floor. Also, I want to acknowledge and thank the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department for their fire prevention open house. You heard, members of the council were there as well. And the River Fest, again, the Laurel Board of Trade, let me thank them for all they continue to do for the community, and in particular, the business community along our Main Street. They did an outstanding job at the River Fest, and well-attended, and look forward to next years. I want to congratulate Laurel Police Department. They took, on October 1st, took part in the Prince George County Iron Team competition at Slupley Lane. I think there were about 30-some teams, and we had two teams in, and one of them came in third place. Am I saying that correct, Chief? Third place? Third and 33rd?
Six and 31.
Oh, sorry. Six and 31. I was trying to promote them a little bit. Anyways, it was a lot of fun. If you've never had the opportunity to attend one, it's really about SWAT teams, military were there, and others, and want to acknowledge the teams from Laurel and thank them for participating. The Laurel Fourth of July did have their indoor yard sale at the Anderson Murphy Building. We want to remind everyone, that's an all-volunteer committee, and if you would like to participate and be involved, or make a donation to them, please contact us here at City Hall. The Fire Prevention Show at St. Mary's in Scottstown Hills in Laurel Elementary went off real well, and acknowledge our fire chief, Dave Cope, and all his team for what they do, and continuing to spread the word of fire prevention, especially in our schools. So thank you, Dave. The members of, the employees here at City Hall did take part in Laurel's mini-walk at Goody Park. I want to thank them for doing that. And the Laurel High School Homecoming, which was October 11th, did get canceled due to some weather, as well as several other events that day. Couple of announcements. Sports Authority Grand Opening Ribbon Cutting Event will be over at the Newtown Center, will be held this Saturday. Ribbon cutting will be at 7:50 a.m., so hopefully you all are up and going to take part in that. You need to be at the store by 7:30. The Department of Public Works will be doing a paper shredding and electronic recycling event at Department of Public Works from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00. You will need to have ID to show that you live in the city. It's a well-attended and worthy event, and Paul, thank you and your staff for continuing those efforts. The City Employee Yard Sale will be here at City Hall on Saturday, the 18th, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. All those proceeds go back to the City of Laurel Employee Fund. And then, on October 18th, a park beautification event at Centennial Park, which is off of Montrose, from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00. And then on that same day, starting at 12:00 noon, we're going to do the ribbon cutting grand opening of the skate park over at Centennial Park. That is our first skate park, and we look forward to having that ribbon cutting, and want to thank Mike Lotzky in particular for his work in that. And I just got an email, and the O's lost tonight, so they're out of it. Darn it. And I have to go to the podium to make a... Do I have a proclamation I want to read? It's Proclamation 2014-18, "Whereas the Friends of the Laurel Library raise money that enables our library to move from from a good to a great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for our children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year." And whereas the work of the Friends of the Laurel Library highlights, Laurel Library highlights that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage and enjoy. And whereas the Friends of the Laurel Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our libraries get the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance and research, readers' advisories, and children's services. And whereas the Friends of the Laurel Library's gift of time and commitment to the library sets an example for all of us on how to volunteer and leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community out there. Craig A. Mo, Mayor of the City of Laurel-Duhubri, proclaim October 19th through the 25th, 2014, as national Friends of the Laurel Library. Does anybody here from the library? No? Mike, you want to come up and accept that for them? Got you all wedged in back there. Come on. Ask Mr. Lotzky to come up, who works with the library. Mike has also served on the task force. You know, there, hopefully, will be breaking ground for a new library once the old facility comes down. So if you want to say something, Mike?
I'll just accept from the, from the mayor for the library, and we look, I'll look forward to the new library opening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Mayor, I'd like to ask your indulgence to go back to Agenda Item 11. There was one oversight on my part, and that is, I was to ask the council's consideration to establish a work group to study the text amendment, and along with staff, to come back before this body with the results of a work group and a revised text amendment.
Oh, moved.
Second, Councilman Ricks?
I will second, but I have a question. But the court reporter gone. Doesn't matter. Okay. And I second it.
Ms. Rao, please call.
We will use some citizen participation.
Yes, absolutely. Citizen participation will be a must.
Councilmember Lez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Crary?
Yes, and I'll note there's at least one citizen left in the back of the room.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Yes.
Councilmember, President Smalls?
Vote yes. And Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. We'll keep you informed. Mr. President, it's my privilege to make a mayoral appointment of Mr. Jack Brock for the Director of Community Planning and Business Services. Mr. Brock is currently the deputy, serving as the, as the director and acting director. As you're well aware, Mr. Brendel, we moved him over to a new position within the City Administrator's Office to create the Office of Economic Development. I think Carl will do an outstanding job there, and his knowledge of the inner workings of the Community Planning and Business Services will enhance his performance there, as well as assist within that department. Mr. Brock has been with us for some time. He's well-knowledge. I have all the faith in the world in, in Jack, and I'm very happy that he accepted and make that nomination to you, and ask for your concurrence. Thank you, Ms. Brendel.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'll accept a motion to confirm.
Mr. President? I yield.
Is that Councilwoman McQuary?
Yes. You have your motion. Fall quietly.
Councilman Ricks, you care to second?
It's my pleasure to second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Rao, please call the roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda Item 8 is a general public hearing. I will open the general public hearing at 7:26. I have no one signed up to speak during the general public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. If you'll come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Turn that mic off, so hit the spot, and the green light will come on.
I usually speak really loud.
Wish one gets you home. Yeah, down below. There you go.
Got it. I just, Pamela Brown, and I'm at 9453 Trevino Terrace in the Village of Patuxent Greens. And I just didn't understand what your last vote was for. So can you clarify?
To establish a work group, yes, to establish a work group of citizens and staff to examine and come back with recommendations regarding the text amendment.
Oh, okay. So it's not put to bed? It's, this is to make it more clear?
Yes.
Or more consistent?
Yes.
And, and community will be included?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I could, since I wasn't at the last meeting, and I apologize, I was not at the work session. This issue is larger than solar panels, ma'am. This text amendment is larger than solar panels. Need to understand it. We need to understand windmills on rooftops, windmills in back... No! Because in fact, it turns out the city administrator has a picture in her community where they put them on the rooftop, okay? And you want to talk about something that may diminish the value of adjoining property owners. It's when...
I understand.
Okay. But again, I think, I think that one of the issues, and I had brought it up before the meeting, but I had to, it was my anniversary. Okay, birthday. Okay? So my wife had other plans for me that night. But again, I think we need to understand, and that's why it's important to get citizen input. Yeah.
She thinks I did it wrong.
Yeah. So you need staff, you need the citizens, you need specialists that understand the Yes, that, that text amendment, and it's, and it's the whole city, as we've said before. It's not just Greens-Patuxent. All right? Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the general public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:28. Agenda Item 9 is the consideration of a recommendation for the reconstruction of the 1,000 to 1,100 blocks of Montgomery Street. Mr.?
So soon they forget.
You threw me. Mr. McCullough.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilmembers, Mayor. I have actually two recommendations tonight. This is the first one, and it involves the reconstruction of the 1,000 block and 1,100 block of Montgomery, of Montgomery Street. As you are fully aware, WSSC has been in the city of Laurel, working on streets, some people think tearing up the streets. Part of that purpose of that is to put down some new sewer lines and some new water lines. And when they finish, they have to repair the streets that they tore up. And it does not include areas of the street that they didn't work on, so there are, when they come back in to repair, like on the 1,000 block and 1,100 block, their, their street repairs are only for what... their street repairs are only for what they destroyed. What we have done in the past, we've talked to their contractors, and if, and we've added some additional funding to the contractors after we got bids from them to see if they would complete 100% of the work in those two blocks, and that's what we've done. So that when they're doing the WSSC work, we can augment that and get the full street repaired at the same time. The two contractors that are working in that two blocks are M.T. Laney Company and Royal Construction. We have worked with both of these contractors. They've done good work for us in the past, and so we've got bids from them, from M.T. Laney for $15,728.43, and from Royal Construction for $23,412. That includes both the concrete and the asphalt work. We have money in the CIP to cover this, this work, and so our recommendation is to augment the contracts that WSSC has so that we get 100% of the work done in those two blocks on Montgomery Street. Our recommendation, then, is to, that we allow M.T. Laney and Royal Construction to do the complete restoration of the 1,000 block and 1,100 block of Montgomery Street for their combined total of $39,141.42.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Counsel, as you know, we discussed this agenda item at our recent work session. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, I move for the approval of the contract for the reconstruction of the 1,000 and 1,100 block of Montgomery Street, as proposed by Mr. McCullough.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda Item 10 is a consideration of a recommendation for fleet acquisition, one mowing tractor. Mr. McCullough?
Annually, as we've talked about in the past, we have a, a fleet acquisition line item in the CIP, and we've already made a lot of procurements from that. One of the procurements that still was waiting to be made has to do with a, a mowing, a riding lawn mower that will be used by Parks and Recreation. We have contacted three different companies and gotten bids from, from all three of them. The low bid was from Finch Services out of Westminster, Maryland, submitted a quote for $34,344.39. All of these quotes included the trading in of a 1990 mowing tractor scheduled for replacement. Funding for this purchase of this comes out of the FY 2015 CIP Replacement Program. We're using GOB funds. And the cost, then, of this one John Deere mowing tractor with a, with a flail mowing attachment after the trade is $34,344.39. Our recommendation, then, is to award this contract to Finch Services for their total cost of, of the $34,344.39.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Counsel, this item was also discussed in our recent work session. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that we award the contractor, Finch Services of Westminster, Maryland, an amount of $34,344.39.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda Item 11 is a second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1808... Oh, I'm sorry, we did that one. I didn't strike that one out. Sorry. Agenda Item 12 is a second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1812. An ordinance to amend Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 13, Development Construction Division 1, Development Construction Requirements Generally to Comply with the Annotated Code of Maryland, Environmental Article Title 4, Subtitle 1, Providing an Effective Date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordinance number 1812 is the results of an audit that was conducted by the Maryland Department of the Environment on the city's building construction requirements. These are the recommendations that were made by the department to bring the city's code into compliance with the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. I will open the public hearing at 7:35. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:35. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman McQuary?
I recommend that we approve ordinance number 1815, set forth on the record by Mr. Brock.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Any discussion? Ms. Ralph, please call the vote.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Smalls?
Vote yes.
Mayor Mau.
Agenda Item 13 is a second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1813. An ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Elections of the Code of the City of Laurel, to make certain violations of the election laws municipal infractions. Require a candidate to file a financial disclosure report upon the filing of the candidate's initial paperwork. To require that in-kind contributions be reported on all financial disclosure forms. To define in-kind contributions and require that they be reported. To require the Board of Election Supervisors meet the first Monday in October to accept the required documents for nomination for each candidate. To provide a recount procedure and other non-substantive changes generally relating to elections in the city. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I will open the public hearing at 7:37. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:37. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Councilman Ricks?
Move for the adoption of ordinance number 1813, as recorded.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau.
Agenda Item 14 is a second public hearing with possible action on Charter Resolution Number 168. Charter Resolution to amend Article 600, Registration and Elections of the City of, of the Charter of the City of Laurel by amending Section 604, Election Equipment, to remove from this section the powers of the election judges. Section 605, Voting Procedures, to clarify early voting. Section 606, Counting Ballots, to provide when paper ballots are to be tallied. Section 608, Certification of Election, to delete the time at which the council must meet. Section 609, Failure to Elect Runoff Elections, to clarify when runoff elections shall be held. Adding 610A, Write-In Ballots, Providing that Write-In Ballots shall be allowed and counted, and other non-substantive changes to the aforementioned section. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open a public hearing at, I can't see my clock now, 7:40. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:40. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President?
Councilman Les?
I move for the adoption of Charter Resolution Number 168. Charter Resolution to amend Article 600, Registration and Elections of the Charter of the City of Laurel, as read into the record.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman McQuary. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau.
Agenda Item 15 is a second public hearing with possible action on Charter Resolution Number 167. A Charter Resolution to amend Article 300 of the Charter of the City of Laurel entitled Government by amending Section 310, City Council, to provide that candidates must reside in the ward for which they seek election for 365 consecutive days prior to filing for office in such ward. And council members elected from a ward must remain a resident of the ward and a registered voter while holding office. Amending Section 311, salaries of council members, and Section 351, salary of the mayor to provide for salary adjustments for the mayor and council members when city employees receive adjustments, and to provide that the mayor and city council members are eligible for health benefits the same as any other city employees. Amending Section 312, Meeting Oath of Office, and Section 352, Oath of Office, to provide that the mayor and city council take the oath of office at the second meeting after the election. Amending Section 355, Appointments to Alter, Appointments to Alter the Procedure for Mayoral Appointments Not Made Within the Timeframe Provided, and Other Non-Substantive Changes to the aforementioned section of the city charter. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I will open the public hearing at 7:42. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:42. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President.
Councilman Ricks?
I so move for the adoption of Charter Resolution Number 167, as read into the record.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau.
Agenda Item 16 is a second public hearing with possible action on Resolution Number 12-14. A Resolution to Establish a Youth Services Commission in the City of Laurel, Maryland to Provide for Its Membership and Duties. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:43. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:43. And counsel, I'll like a motion.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Councilwoman McQuary.
I recommend that we approve Resolution Number 1214, as, 12-14 is set forth in the record.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau.
Agenda Item 17 is the introduction of the first public hearing on ordinance number 1814. An ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open a public hearing at 7:44. I have no one signed up to speak. Ms. Saylor?
Yes, Mr. President, as we discussed this ordinance at the work session last week, this will increase the FY 2015 operating budget by $100,000 in light of the time to renegotiate our health and dental insurance contract. The proposed prices are all greater than what had been budgeted. We did receive additional highway user revenue from the state of Maryland, which I'm proposing that we add to the budget for state shared taxes with an offsetting addition of $100,000 to the employee insurance. This additional, these additional funds will help offset public works expenditures, therefore freeing up real estate tax revenues to offset the health insurance increase.
Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:45. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rule.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman McQuary. Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Council, Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Now, Councilman Les, would you care to make a motion to adopt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1814. An ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
Councilman Ricks, would you care to second?
I will.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau.
Agenda Item 18 is consideration of bid recommendations for health, dental, and vision insurance.
Good evening. With the help of our broker, the Melzer Group, the city has bid employee health and dental insurance. The desire was to receive bids on the five forms of employee benefit insurance the city currently provides, including a basic HMO health plan, an open-access HMO health plan, an HMO health plan without of network benefits, a maximum allowable charge PPO dental plan, and a 90th percentile usual customary and reasonable PPO dental plan. City currently offers all these coverages to full-time and part-time employees, retirees, elected officials, and eligible dependents of these groups. Enrollment is optional and requires enrolled payments of 20% of the cost of their selected option. The FY 2015 budget provides $1,735,000 for employee coverage and $148,000 for retiree coverage under Department Code 10950, Employee Insurance. City received a renewal offer from Care First, our current health insurance provider, reflecting a rate increase of 49% effective November 1, 2014. We have negotiated a 43.2% increase that find that cost excessive for both city budget and the employee ability to pay. To better control costs, we bid coverage from a variety of providers. The result of these bids are as follows. ATNAD declined to bid. Care First provided the 43.2% increase quoted above. Cigna offered a proposal with premiums 42.6% over current rates. Kaiser Permanente declined to quote. And United Healthcare offered a proposal with premiums 30.3% over current rates. The dental insurance bid received included Assurant, our current provider, whose initial offer was 30.3% above current, subsequently revised to 19%. MetLife offered a proposal with premiums 20.96% above current. And United Healthcare offered a proposal with premiums 24.3% above current and a $10,000 credit in the first year on health insurance if offered with UHC health insurance, including a second-year rate cap of 7% and a third-year rate cap of 8%. Proposals were received, that were received were evaluated by staff and considered provider network credentialing and benefit package, including out-of-pocket expenses and premium. United Healthcare also covered, offered a vision plan that would provide eye exams as the Care First medical plan has, and an additional annual premium of $4,731.48. It also allowed health insurance enrollees to voluntarily buy up for the purchase of contact lenses or eyeglasses. UHC has offered another $10,000 health insurance credit in the first year if offered with the UHC Health and Dental. the UHC Health and Dental. It's recommended that the Mayor and City Council award coverages follows. That the contract for employee health insurance be awarded to United Healthcare for their OCI Basic Gated HMO Plan, the UHC Choice Plan, and the UHC Choice Plus Plan. That the contract for employee dental insurance be awarded to United Healthcare for their Low PPO MAC Plan and their High PPO 90th UCR Plan. And that the award include the United Healthcare Primary Vision Plan and the Voluntary Buy-Up Vision Plan for contacts and eyeglasses. Predicting the cost of health and dental insurance coverage is difficult because it is not known at this time who will select which of the options offered, particularly as people leave and new hires are brought on. Computing costs based on the current enrollment produces the following projections for the city's share of premiums. Health insurance, $1,899,835.87. Dental insurance, $125,994.82. And vision insurance of $4,731.48, for a total of $2,030,562.17. This award will provide coverage for only eight months of the current fiscal year, so the required funding becomes $1,533,708.11. Of the $1,735,000 budget for employee insurance, an estimated $1,229,100 will remain at the end of October. Added to this is 51,000 of surplus funds in the same line budgeted for workers' compensation insurance. This leaves a funding shortfall of approximately $73,600, which was made up by your recent adoption of ordinance 1814.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I will open the public hearing at, actually, no public hearing, while I'll accept a motion to award, counsel.
President. So move.
So a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Mayor?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Green, and in particular, thank the council, you know, we, several years ago, we went back to the broker that we used, and that has helped us quite a bit here in the last couple of years when we're talking about our insurance and our healthcare, so, and Ms. Saylor was able to pull the numbers together, so we appreciate you working with us, and in particular, I want to thank staff for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Crary?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda item 19, thank you. Agenda item 19 is the first public hearing on ordinance number 1816, an ordinance to amend Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 10 Property Maintenance Code, Section 18-147 Amendments and Supplementation to add a new subsection 106.6 entitled Enforcement to the Property Maintenance Code of the City of Laurel to provide that the chief building official or his/her designee shall post a structure as unfit, unsafe for human habitation, may remove or have removed any person or persons, including the owners, from said structure while posted as unfit, unsafe for human habitation, save and expecting persons on premises correcting the violation, providing an effective date. I read the title into the record for the first reading?
Sir?
Good evening.
Well, good evening. We adopt international property maintenance code by reference, and the code doesn't, it's not clearly if you have a person reentering a house after we posted on the hapel. But this ordinance does, it makes it very clear to us that we can even post a house, and we post a house, and we can even lock the doors, and only allow people in the house to make repairs or remove their items. It's basically just keeping the house safe, because otherwise, we're constantly going back to the house to kick the people out when we post this. That's what this ordinance does, it just clarifies it for us and gives us authority to remove them if we have a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. I will open the public hearing at 7:54. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:54. The second public hearing with possible action will be, Mayor?
I'm gonna take y'all by surprise, and I apologize. I would ask that the council suspend the rules on this, there's several things that we're dealing with. I think it's already pretty much in the code, there's a couple small clarifications within the document, but I would ask that we move forward on this, if the council would, and I apologize for asking now, but there's some things that have come to light.
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crary, any discussion? Ms. Raoul, call a roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
President, move for adoption of ordinance number 1816 that's presented here this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks, Councilwoman Crary, would you second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Raoul, please call a vote.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mau.
I'm gonna concur, let me just thank council again, I apologize for bringing this up last. I think it'll take care of some issues, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda item 20 is the introduction in the first public hearing on ordinance number 1817, an ordinance to provide funding for the Youth Services Commission. I've read the title into the record for the first reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:56. I have no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:56. The second public hearing with possible action will be held at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, October 27, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. Agenda item 21, introduction in the first public hearing on ordinance number 1818, an ordinance to provide funding for the Emergency Services Commission. I read the title into the record for the first reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:57. I have no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who would like to speak? If no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:57. The second public hearing with possible action will be held at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, September, I'm sorry, October 27, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. That concludes our agenda, is there any other business to come before the Mayor and City Council?
Only thank God for whoever fixed the microphones, bless you.
They ain't fixed yet, and I ain't real happy right now.
Thank you, our meeting is adjourned.